Welcome. We have to my far left, Commissioner Rickert, Commissioner Chris Pash. My name is Court Boyce. To my right, Commissioner John Herzog. To his right, County Council Anthony Pope. And to his right, Staff Jesuit. And in the audience, we have Treasurer David Barnes and Planning Director Becky Crockett. So I want to thank the board and the staff for putting this meeting together today. I think it's really important that we could get together. First time we'll be together actually in three weeks. That's because we loaded up pretty early, the first couple of months. I think we got a lot caught up. We haven't caught up completely yet, but I think the time we had this meeting is good for the day. I want to welcome County Council Anthony Pope. Very glad to have you here. I think I can safely be confident speaking to the full board. Anxious to have you move your family here. It's been a whirlwind. And then too, I certainly want to welcome back Brenda Starbird, who worked 12 years for County Council Jared Herbage, and then four and a half years for County Council John Huddle. So unfortunately, we may only have her a couple of months, but I think she's going to be a great addition. Sometimes she's hard to get along with, but I'm sure you'll be fine. So I'm going to give a quick COVID report. Not good news, not bad news. We had 21 cases last week, but we have gone from the extreme to the high risk. Thank you, Eric. I'll be right there. COVID report, you know, pushing as hard as I can, will stand publicly and even physically. I'm going to put a smile on my face with the businesses that may decide to stay open. So I'll give another little bit of a report. So the agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Pash. Call to order and pledge of allegiance. Would you all stand with me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was pretty good unison. We are all without a microphone? I'm a good leader on that, huh? So back to the COVID report real quickly here. Goes back to the letter I sent out to the governor and her staff on March 2nd, no more shutdowns. So we also had a basically one-on-one conversation with her last Friday. She had just one staff there, and I had invited Council Pope and Director Rickert. It was a 20-plus minute call. And for the most part, I pleaded that for the complete removal of extreme risk category statewide and to tile the guidelines pretty much solely to hospitalizations. So I'm going to read something here real quick, and I'm not going to take the credit because that comes from ALC District 4 where I'm chair, but it was primarily from the Jackson County Commissioners. And I think the governor caught on. So this will just take a second to read. Governor Brown announces updates to county risk levels. New statewide metric added for determining extreme risk level. COVID-19 hospitalizations are a key indicator of severe illness in Oregon communities. As vaccine distribution increases, case counts and percent positivity will not be adequate indicators on their own for measuring the threat COVID-19 poses to public health. This week, Oregon is adding a statewide hospitalization metric for moving to extreme risk. So that's going to help a lot of counties, and certainly going to help Curry County. I think that's a good point of why, and it's still plenary for you, Commissioner Herzog. It's one of the reasons why I think an association where you can county education is really helpful and really beneficial. It's been a tremendous pleasure to work with the other counties, work around the state with ALC, and so I would encourage you on that. So approval amendment of the agenda?
I have an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to bring the part of the executive session part out into the regular session here. You know, county employees, hiring of new county employees, the interview process should be done under executive session. I agree with that. But this is a discussion about the process and how we get there, and I think that should be brought out into the open session and allow transparency for our citizens.
So are we going to have, we had discussed Director Rickert on applications. Do we have some applications apparently?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you have those with you today?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm still collecting them.
Is there a reason you didn't want to bring them today or add that to the executive discussion?
The emails and everything that I got to for the reason why we needed to set this special meeting up all didn't deal with any interviewing or resume review. I was under the impression that it was all to discuss some of the emails that had been going back and forth and possibly what your plan for that position was, not to review resumes or anything of the like.
Well, thank you. It wasn't my plan, but it was my recommendation to come before the board today and just discuss some of the salary ranges, some of the past history. And I wouldn't be opposed to Commissioner Pash's recommendation, except there are parts in this that I would want to keep in executive session while I'm taking the lead there. Go ahead.
Is the interview process, or I'm sorry, is the application process still open?
Yes, I'm still collecting interviews, or still collecting resumes, yes.
So we haven't even, when does that close?
I was going to give it till this Friday. That'll give it a full two weeks.
And I could understand, Chair, that you'd want to keep salary in that possibly in executive session. Well, salary is actually a part of our budget, so everyone's salary is open to the public. So that discussion is a matter of public knowledge already, but the interview process and names and the personal part of that, absolutely, I would agree that you'd want to keep that in executive session.
Perfect. Do you agree, Commissioner Herzog?
Yeah, I think executive session.
Okay. Approval amendments with amendments? Or excuse me, the agenda with amendments. Commissioner Herzog?
Prior to that, I would like to just scratch discussion of office-based discussion. I think that's been determined. I think that's a rabbit hole we don't need to go down.
Well, let's have the discussion now then and see what your feelings are on that. And you don't want to take it from the agenda, do you?
That was going to be my motion or suggestion.
So let's hold that open and let's also be transparent before the public on where we are with this issue. So I'm still looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
No move.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Staff Jesuit. So where I'm at on this, there's been some email exchanges between Director Rickert and I, and Commissioner Herzog, you are council liaison. And this is, you know, Council Pope has not been at him about this, but he's kind of smiled and casually mentioned, yeah, he'd like to have a window. It might even have been more my idea. And, you know, when you set somebody up for success, you want to give them the best possible option you can. We're not hurting for office space here. It's not in great supply, but I think that what I'm going to ask you to consider, since you are the liaison, that this should be a board decision, and it should be a full board decision and not just a county manager or a director of operations. It gives us a chance to, you know, what I would recommend is maybe coming back this, the 14th or even the 28th, just saying, here's what I've learned. I mean, there's been an issue, a concern that there are paper-thin walls here, but the county's dealt with that for 30-some years. Just puts a little bit of discipline on us to be aware and to be respectful and courteous. But I don't know what the best office accommodations would be. And we know that we'll probably only have Staff Starbird here for two months. And I've been here a couple of times, Commissioner Herzog, Commissioner Pash, that all of a sudden an office has changed and I don't know anything about it. And that's not good business, and that's not what I signed up for. And, you know, generally I've let it go, but I have been outspoken some. And so again, the interest here, in my opinion, is to make sure that we have the best possible accommodations for Council Pope and his staff. And, you know, the way housing is, he may be driving here every day for two hours back and forth. So, you know, I hope not, and I know the board feels that way and is optimistic that, you know, he'll be able to prevail there, bring his family as soon as possible. But I would encourage you, Commissioner Herzog, to just really look into this and see what all of our possible options are. And give a report back to the board. And I think it'd be very important the citizens to know that when the time comes, we unite on this decision and not just pass it off to one person that's not elected. And therefore, it can certainly be interpreted that we're shucking our responsibilities. And once we move, it's hard to adjust, hard to change, hard to go back. So, you know, I'm just encouraging you, I guess somewhat of a respectful request, and learn all you can would be my wish is preference, hope. I'll do that. I think we have a consensus on that. Council Pope, I don't think we need a motion on that, do we?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of things on this, though. First of all, I personally believe, again, that we're getting into the small parts of something that we don't need to be involved in, and this is selecting people's offices. That's a decision that Director of Operations and new Council Pope sit down and say, here's what we have, where would you like to be? And then can we accommodate that? Because it's, you know, it's going to be, for Council Pope, it's going to be, those walls he's going to have to look at every day. So he's going, you know, of course, we want to make him as comfortable as we can. I understand that Cherie Ward is going to be moving across the street and moving public health over there, if we can work the issues with that out. And that office may come available as well, which is an extremely large and very comfortable office. And Ms. Starbird may be able to even have a desk in that office and work right in that office with him. So, but one of the other concerns I have is you CC'd us on some emails that you had sent over the, I think it was Monday morning, and the responses to those emails, and that was very concerning to me, some of the language in those emails. And again, Commissioner, I'm just, I'm very concerned that you are, again, out of your lane on something, and to read things like "I" is the shortest word in the English language, and if you feel you have the final authority, in my opinion, it's going to create some additional long-term difficulties between you and I speaking to Mr. Rickert. If that is your choice, especially with me as chair, I just want to reiterate the chair's position in a board of commissioners is to basically outline and run the meetings. You have no further authority than any other commissioner on this board, and you do not have the authority to act in the manner that you did in the language of these emails, and I would please caution you that you are opening the county up to a liability, and please caution you to stop, sir.
Thank you, Chair Pash. The reasons you just outlined there and what our responsibilities are collectively is why I called this meeting today. I don't want any surprises. I didn't sign up for that. That's not what the people have asked. It's not an arbitrary, one person decides something. You may feel like the offices are not a big thing, but I do, and I want to make sure that I have some one-third input into those decisions. Likewise, you gentlemen have each a third input. And so to learn later, and the power that can go to a county administrator, this is not a city council we're running. We have a tremendous responsibility here. When that responsibility goes to liability, if we're not involved in the decision-making, then we can't really go before the people and, you know, adequately suggest that we are doing our job. So, yeah, there's been some email exchanges between Mr. Rickert and I, and that's unfortunate. But I'm not backing down for what I promised the people, and I've been here six days a week indefinitely, and that's what it takes. Maybe, hopefully not forever, but that's part of my commitment to this job. So it brought us here together to have this discussion. If you want to read all the emails, I'd be glad to do that. And, yeah, my job is to work with this board and inform you, and that's why we're, again, why we're having this meeting today. Commissioner Herzog?
I have nothing to say other than I will look into this, and I think I stated in the meeting prior to this that as commissioners, we need to be able to have the authority to get information. But one of the reasons I didn't want this in, you know, I wanted to scratch this discussion is because to me, offices are trivial, but they, obviously, they aren't to everybody. So when I came, when I came here in January, I just came to the office, and there was an emptying office, and I moved in. And I think, and I didn't know I could say I want, I could have a pick, and that's okay, and I'm okay with it because I've got a couch in there now, and I don't want to have to move it. So I was just thinking that this is kind of in the weeds, but that's just mine. That's just my thinking, so.
Well, very good. Did you have something else? Oh, excuse me.
I do want to say that as I, that I have looked into, I've researched this as I wrote you in an email, I've researched this, I've looked at different room possibilities, I've got, I've sought after information from previous Curry Council Huddle, from our maintenance director, from even Commissioner Herzog, and we have talked about this. We actually talked about it probably a month ago, at least several weeks ago. And so the decision was not made on a whim. It was made in what is, based on that information that we gathered, on what is best for a county council's office, the privacy that that position should entail. With that being said, and so that I'm clear, what is the motion going on here? Is it, or is the consensus that this is, that room changes or board decisions?
Well, that's obviously my intent and my understanding of my job description. So at what point do we draw the line and say, you have authority, I as one commissioner don't even have a say-so? So if I'd have known that you've been spending time, Mr. Herzog, as liaison, that would have given me, you know, some confidence that, hey, we are making this a priority. And by the way, Council Huddle and Council Pope, I'm not in any way recommending or suggesting, excuse me, that they're hard to please or something. It's just, we all take a little bit of pride in our offices, and, yeah, some more than others. And, you know, especially when you spend a ton of time in there, you want it comfortable, and he's going to be spending a lot of time in his office. So I'm not putting down any of the office accommodations. But my concern is, and I want the public to know, I don't believe that I am to take a backseat to the responsibility here. So I do have a view, I do have an opinion, and I do have, you know, a cause to make sure that our employees are, get the very, very best accommodations. So the motion is, or the consensus is, that Commissioner Herzog will come back in a couple of weeks. I presume he'll work with you, and it's not a Council Pope issue. It may, you guys may come back and say, we need to move Boyce over here. I don't know. I mean, if that's a recommendation, I'll take a serious look. That's my responsibility, Commissioner. So that's my understanding of what we, the way we left it. Mr. Pash?
I just think it would have been nice if you would have said that originally to Director Rickert. Mr. Rickert, have you spoken with liaison and, you know, have you coordinated to making a decision? Because I ultimately think it's the Director of Operations' decision on where, and along with the person that's moving into that office, to hopefully have an agreement, yeah, this is the best office for me, rather than, this is, the word minutia was brought up the other day, this is minutia, this is things that as commissioners, we don't need to be involved If, I don't know, I just think that it's silly that we're sitting here on, at 8:30 on a Wednesday morning, having a board meeting about where the best office is for our new county council. That's a decision that should be agreed upon between the new county council and our Director of Operations, and letting the liaison know, hey, this is where the new county council has decided that he is most comfortable. Do you agree? And then, yes, if the liaison says, no, that's a horrible office, and this is why, then it maybe becomes a conversation. But this is way, the cart's way before the horse here, and I just think this is a waste of county time and effort to be sitting here right now.
Well, we have, we have a strong disagreement then. So Commissioner Herzog, it's really to the situation of what our authority is, what our authority isn't. There's a, in my view, not to make it dramatic here, but there's a battle for the heart and soul of this county. There's a battle for the controlling of the spending, and, you know, I'm not going to back down from what I see as my responsibility. I will do every possible effort to be as respectful and as detailed, as honorable as I can possibly be, but, you know, I feel about an unelected person telling me and telling this board, here's what I am going to do. So this meeting, I think, has been a good discussion, has been helpful. I appreciate it, and I communicated that in the beginning. Come together on short notice. I think we have a good plan, and I think it'll produce some good results.
So again, what is the consensus then?
Consensus is he'll come back in a couple of weeks, and I presume he's going to work with Director Rickert and, pardon me?
Who's he?
He?
Okay, he didn't say.
I've said it three times, that Commissioner Herzog is going to work on this the next couple of weeks. I presume he's going to work with Director Rickert and Council Pope.
Yep.
I mean, it'll bear some fruit. Can't, I don't, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, we want to spend any more time on it, Director Rickert?
I just want to point out that, as you mentioned, making decisions on expenses and those type of things is a bit different than room changes. But I want to be clear what we're doing here, and if it is determined that it is a board decision to make these kind of, as you put it, Commissioner Herzog, in-the-weeds decisions, then, I think our meetings are going to be filled with a lot of these type of decisions that the board doesn't really need to be spending time making. Anyway, I'll wind that out.
So maybe we only need, maybe we only need one meeting a month instead of two or three. I mean, if these decisions aren't important, you know, obviously, we have some disagreement here. I'm a little bit surprised. That's okay. You know, that's why we're here. That's why the other five counties, the other four counties in District 4, they all have three members, none of them have a county administrator. They have staff, and they're there every day, and they're doing their job, and they make the mundane decisions, they make the tough decisions, but they're on the job, full duty. So to say that his office or, you know, JJ's office is, it's really irrel, that one person can make that decision, I just respectfully disagree with that. I see we have the sheriff joined us, Sheriff John Ward, thank you. So any more discussion on this? We'll look for your report in a couple of weeks, and appreciate that very much, Commissioner Herzog. So we're going to go into, anything else on that before we go into executive session?
Well, I don't know, as we amended the agenda to not bring most of this into executive session, just the interview process.
This is for the billing. I think that's probably why Director Planning Crockett is here. So we're going into executive session for one issue?
No, sir. What I'm saying is I asked to amend the agenda, and you both agreed that the agenda is amended, that we will talk about this in open session, not in executive session, unless it is to discuss applications and a particular person. At that point, if you wanted to go into executive session, yes. But I feel like the process of what's happening here needs to be in an open session. That's what we amended the agenda to do, was my understanding, anyway.
Was that your understanding?
I believe so.
So we're going to talk about the billing official?
Yes.
And I can't, I can't really talk about that person unless we go into executive session. And I don't want to mention any names, but I want to talk about some instability that we've had in that particular program, the four years I've been here. And so I want to go into executive sessions, and that was my understanding of the agenda.
Well.
Go ahead.
If I could, it's been my understanding that you have been in contact with someone about taking the position. We have an interview process that we as a board do. Our Director of Operations in coordination with HR posts that position open, they collect applications for that position, and then they bring those applications to the board. I understand that there may be a relationship with this person. I happen to know who this person is, and I have a relationship with that person as well. My problem was is that the email that I saw that was to this person was rather leading in that it was almost offering him the job with me as one commissioner. I guess that I need to, and I'm just surmising the language, and I'll let you define it if you'd rather, but it's basically offering the person the job and offering a person or willing to fight for a salary increase that is substantial to fill that position, which from a negotiation aspect of hiring, we've lost any negotiation aspect. We've probably, what I would say, muddied the water for being able to negotiate this position with this person, and we've basically circumvented the entire process that we as a board have for the application process. And how do we explain to those people that have current applications that are coming in that this has already occurred, and one commissioner would like to move forward and bring that person only to the board without all the other applications being considered equally?
Well, I just found out yesterday that we have other applications yesterday morning by HR Swift. So that was news to me. You bet. This person that I'm recommending to the board, which is the primary reason that I called this meeting, requested this meeting today, he comes highly, highly recommended. He is local, he has a, yeah. So we go into executive session, and I can give you my rationale for why I think this could potentially be a very good choice for Curry County. He is local. That's a revelation in itself. So can we go to executive session and have a responsible discussion? I don't believe any of my emails were promising or leading to him, but yes, I am optimistic he would be the best thing for Curry County. And I've talked to a lot of people that know him, and so I would like to talk to the board. Sooner the better, privately. Okay?
I want to read one email that you wrote that I feel is leading. I'll leave names out of this. The amount, and I'll leave the amount out, too. The amount per month is acceptable to me and should be presented to the full board.
So would you read that again, please? That portion?
The amount per month is acceptable to me and should be presented to the full board. This is an email from you to...
So is there something wrong with that sentence?
I'm just pointing it out, pointing out that that is leading. I'm just pointing it out, pointing out that that is leading.
Okay, how's it leading? Do you want to find a good candidate for this position?
Yeah, that's what we're working on.
So Commissioner Herzog, can we go into executive session? We can get all this out in the air?
I think so.
I appreciate that. So we'll change the tape here. We're going to go into recess on this meeting, go into executive session, 192.660, executive session 1A, employment of a public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual agent.
We're going to need to go get the disc.
That's correct. I'll be right back.
Thank you, Congressman. To proceed as directed, April 7, 2021, the regular meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.